Everyone, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town in New Canaan for Tuesday, September twenty one at eight thirty five will start. Before we start, we have two items to add to the agenda. Um, one is a uh House usually study. Um, and the other one is the Bristow Centennial Master Plan work. And um, so I move we amend the agenda to add these two items. We're not going to add the third item today.
Okay.
Oh, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second, Nick. Okay, all in favor?
I.
The amend the agenda is so, so this is a hybrid meeting, which means we will take comment by public uh, public comment by email. In addition to in person, no one's here from the public, how did the from the media? And um, so anyone who wants to send comments, we will read them in the course of the meeting to BOs distribution at newcanac t dot gov. Okay, um, that's the second item on the agenda, but actually we'll go back to the minutes of the last meeting on September seventh. Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
None.
On here.
Okay, I move we approve the minutes of September seven, two thousand twenty one meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
That's unanimous. So now we go on to Tiger. Has several items. Good morning, Tiger. Tiger has six items.
Short day today.
Five items.
Morning.
Including including the uh, Bristow, we'll add that to your.
Yeah, at that point in time, we'll have a Maria come up and join us. Okay, the uh, so the first item is a an extension of the contract uh with New England paving for phase two of our localized repairs. Um, we've been doing this for quite a long time. Usually usually we come in for phase one, see exactly how much work we have, and then come in for phase two. Right around this time, I looked at last year and we did it on uh August seventeenth, last time a little bit later. Uh, they've done excellent work for us in the past, and we'd like to extend their contract for a hundred thousand dollars for localized repairs throughout town. That's curb cuts, uh, utility problems, things of that nature, that they've done an excellent job uh for us in the past.
Questions on this item? I know, Nick, you've been through this before, so.
Many times.
No questions?
I actually called Tiger yesterday, so I'll set.
Okay, I move we approve the uh request from Public Works to enter to contract with the medium paving for the pave two thousand twenty one localized repair project for a hundred thousand dollars. Nick seconds for the discussion, all in favor?
I.
Okay. Local roads, local roads number one.
So this is a contract extension. We had a paving bid um earlier in the year. FGB was the low bid. And this is a an extension of that contract to take care of three roads that are now um complete with ever source gas. Main Street from Farm Road to Lakeview Avenue, that extension.
Hallelujah.
Yeah, Down River Road uh called the Main Street and then Old Studio Road. There's one service left on Old Studio. They should be getting to it soon. It's a new resident that just moved in at that point in time. Um, FGB will be coming in to take care of that uh, take care of the repaving. I should say that Down River and Old Studio were on our list to be repaved until ever source came in, so we had to kind of delay them. Uh, so there are responsibility based upon the MOU. The MOU says that if it was, if it had been paid prior, it'd be ever source's responsibility. If it hadn't been paid prior, it'd be the town's responsibility. So Down River and Old Studio um will be paved out of our uh, out of our uh funding, and then Main Street from Farm to Lakeview will be a shared uh responsibility between Aquarian and Ever Source Gas. The uh, the total work stands at two hundred and seventy nine thousand five twenty fifty four. We added a fifteen percent contingency for forty two thousand dollars for a total of three twenty one, five twenty fifty four. Um, they carried their unit pricing from our original contract, so it's just basically a a straight add from one to the next.
So Main Street is farm road ups as far as?
Farm to Lakeview, yeah, which is we, you know, there's a, there's a stretch there from Lakeview to Oak, but that's a new installation of water main, and they have some additional tie-ins that they might have to do. We don't want to get involved in that paving it and then have a problem. And then from Oak Street further on, there's a couple of little sinkholes in there that we can take care of, but the rest of it seems to be in pretty good shape for now, and then we'll come to look to do that next year, that last piece.
So what, go ahead.
Tigers, thank you. Um, could you just clarify the point that you made is that uh Aquarian and Ever Source, they're covering the cost of the Main Street ones, about a hundred and sixty nine thousand, is that right? And so how how does that work? Do we pay for it and then they reimburse us back?
Yeah, I already have a check from Aquarian that I that I that I received and the I have a meeting with Ever Source uh tomorrow morning to review.
This is really the first time.
I was gonna ask.
You know, we've done Farm Road.
Did Farm Road, and then this is, this is basically, yeah, starting the whole process.
When when are we going to do like Lakeview and some of those roads that are?
The thought is to do it next year. The uh, for any road that was done in twenty eighteen, Lakeview's an interesting question. I'll answer that one. Anything that was done in twenty eighteen, the MOU said they had twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three years to do um all their their main installation and their service lines. Uh, in twenty twenty, because of COVID, they didn't hire any, they furloughed all their sales staff. So we said, we'll give you one more year to get as many services in, because why are we doing it unless we're going to get services in? We'll give you one more year and then we'll start the the repaving process. Main Street, because of its condition and because of its use, I had told them early on that I wanted to do it back. I said I wanted to do it in April, then I said I'll give you till September one. Now we're September twenty one, and I'm saying we're going to come in in the next couple of weeks. It's over. Uh, but then the thought is that we'll come down the the stretch and attack the roads that have been done first, or the roads that all the services have been done, say. Um, anywhere, it's basically from Park Street to Main Street with South Avenue in the middle. So any of that inner area.
There's me, there's the share, there's a whole bunch of streets, this completely like uh.
Cherry, yeah, Cherry's at the end of that list, but you have, you have Crystal, Grace, Brooks, Douglas, all those coming down through that if all the services have been installed, we'll be verifying that through uh the wintertime to make sure that no one else is lacking. And then we'll come through and uh put out an entire bid just for that work alone. So ever source will understand exactly how much their responsibility is at that time.
Why do you mention Park Street? When is Park Street going to be done with the state funds? Not just. You talking sidewalk? All the way sidewalks and road.
Sidewalk, the, we received a um, a commitment letter from the DOT for the lots of funding, and we have six months to put a shovel in the ground. So we received that letter a week or so ago. We have six months to finalize the project, put a shovel in the ground. That's around April. And that uh coincides somewhat with Park Street was done in twenty nineteen. So if you had nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, I gave him a little bit of twenty-two, then at the end of the year, we would come in and do Park Street. In answer to Lakeview, Lakeview's a little bit different because Aquarian has a water main installation. Uh, very large transmission line that they're going to be bringing in from Wilton through town, and that goes straight down Lakeview. So while Lakeview, that stretch between one twenty-three and Milport Avenue
is terrible.
Is, it's an awful shape. That's exactly where it's going to go, and they're going to tear up the entire road. So the thought is we repave it now, and then they tear it up in two years? Or do we just live with it? So it's the unfortunate thing, and I don't want to spend anyone's money and then have it torn back up again. And the the size of that main will will require that almost the entire road is torn up. It's a thirty-six inch main. You dig three feet on either side, you got a nine foot hole at that point in time, right?
And then we're hoping ever source is going to be in Pine Street and Upper Elm and uh Grove Street this fall, like this fall to get the gas line in there.
Correct.
So it's a never ending saga to get the.
Well, that that's a good question. I mean, you know, Tiger, what's 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 the end game with ever source? How long are they going to be um? You know, putting in pipes after gas?
Uh, they have to justify each uh, each new extension now as far as whether or not um it fits inside their metrics. And uh, we were able to make Pine Street, Grove Street and uh Upper Elm Street work within that um. That cost analysis, the rest, I don't know if they'll they'll be able to then fit, whether or not, you know, what they'll receive back in sales will justify the expenditure of the pipe in the ground. So the 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 expansion might, you know, um, that we'll have to look for other areas for them to go, but I I don't know exactly how much further they can go.
I mean, have you had discussions with them about, you know, new new areas?
Yeah, 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 they're they're committed to continuing to expand, and they just haven't specified.
Right, we look.
Getting up with their.
Right, we looked at Cherry, Cross, V D.
Yeah.
Um, things of that nature behind the Y. Other areas of that. It really comes down to also whether or not the, you know, the residents are looking for it. They've got to contact us and let us know that they're interested. And that that'll help drive the expansion.
So did Nick's question though, is it till two thousand twenty-three, do you think, for for the what do you?
Thousand and thirty?
The uh, well, at least until twenty twenty-three, I would imagine, at least because of that's Pine Elp, Upper Elm and Grove, right? And at that point in time, we'll we'll continue to see if there's other areas for them to go, other expansion areas.
Keep in mind, this is part of the Connecticut ten-year Governor Malloy plan to expand gas in Connecticut. So so this was a ninety million dollar project for ever source in various towns, and um we're coming up on the end of that tenure. They hope to have an extension so they can justify more expansion, but uh. Okay, that's the status of that. We're back to local roads, number one, the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars plus a contingency for a total of three twenty-one, five twenty fifty-four to do the roads that Tiger described. Uh, I move, do I have a second?
Second.
For the discussion?
On here.
All in favor? Aye, okay, thank you, Tiger, moving on to.
Thank you. The uh, the next would be uh Wavine Park Trail Repair. Um, this is a quote we received from Hussey Brothers Excavating. This portion of the trail is um, if you're coming from the western parking lot, down the hill towards Lapham Road, it's one of our newer installations. Uh, it got hit pretty hard um, Ida. Um, and we're looking at redoing the trail portion and then increasing the swales on either side with a little bit more of a drainage extension. We have drainage there, and we have some swales, but we're looking at the the amount of volume of water that was rushing down through there. We need to increase the uh, the swell depth uh, and then add a little bit of drainage and then repair the trail itself. So Joe came in uh with a price of eighteen thousand seven hundred. He's done excellent work for us in the past, and we'd like to uh continue that relationship and have him do this work for us.
What's the expected timeframe to get that back in shape?
Uh, I talked to him um yesterday morning and asked him to, told him we were going to be bringing this and asked him to to expedite it. I would imagine in the next couple of weeks to be able to come and help us. To get it, get it back in shape for, you know, right now it's uh it's usable, but it's not that.
Is it usable, so people can still?
Great. We we did a kind of a top dressing work on it just to kind of dress it back up against so people could use it. But we really want to get in and and take care of it.
Right.
So this is an example of Ida damage that uh we talked about yesterday with our emergency management state representatives that are trying to collect the amount of damage to public facilities in Fairfield Counties um and other parts of Connecticut, so they can get the disaster declaration from Pima. Um, in which case we could conceivably get reimbursed for this kind of damage expense if they uh, if we have eligible expenses, so.
How much would be the total, do you think, in New Canaan for the total expense?
Well, we haven't had that much, actually. We we had a couple of roads that were required some repairs and uh, but Tiger, other, we, we didn't have, fortunately, we didn't have that much major public damage.
Correct.
I was gonna mention later.
We had a, we had a large washout on Turner Hill, lost a good good portion of the of the embankment. Valley Road down below it, we've had uh some other work in some other areas that have been done, but overall compared to other towns, we fared very.
What's the number that they mentioned yesterday, a hundred million dollars they they estimate for?
Right.
For Fairfield County for uh, or state, I forget what they said, but we.
That was Fairfield County, a hundred million dollars alone. They said that the state was going to be carrying some of the counties just damaged to state roads that had occurred. We had some here on one twenty-three, lower one twenty-three, uh, almost towards the traffic light at Carter Street. The state came out and and already started doing some work. They've got to do some more embankment stabilization down there. Um, that's that's just here in town. They have, but they have a myriad of problems elsewhere in the state.
I was gonna mention this later, but I'll mention it now. So we have uh, there's also individual assistance available on a disaster. Uh, homeowners who have major damage, it has to be major, not just flooding in a basement, but you know, five feet of water in a basement created major damage. And we're trying to collect the information from residents. We know a number, several residents had major damage. Um, and then we're going to contribute that to the state's uh, uh, request for disaster declaration for uh, for Ida. And hopefully, uh, some homeowners. We also had a meeting last week uh in this room with representatives from DOT about some flooding problems that are traditional flooding problems, which were really bad with Ida, that we're going to try to fix. Um, some, and uh, so that's all going on. That being said, uh, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Hathi Brothers Excavating for eighteen thousand seven hundred for Wavine Park Trail Repairs. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Nick seconds for the discussion? All in favor?
I.
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 Where you want. Thank you, Nick, and um, now we move to uh.
So construction material standards, I'll ask Maria Coppola, our town engineer, to come up. She's done the lion's share of the work on this specifically related to our lot sip grants.
That's good morning. For over the last twenty-plus years, Public Works has used established construction material standards for work within our town in New Canaan right of ways. Specifically as relates to sidewalks and curbing. Sidewalks where we directly abut a roadway are to be a minimum of five feet wide where feasible and be concrete or brick walks with granite curbing. Our September sixteenth memo circulated to the Board of Selectmen further documented the current sidewalk and curbing standards. We respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen formally accept the construction materialist standards outlined in our memo in order to, excuse me, memorialize on record these current standards that have been in place since earlier than nineteen ninety-eight. But by having these standards documented, as Tiger mentioned, it will further enforce our standards when applying for grants and funding. Um, because we'll have it actually documented as granite being our 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 standard, concrete sidewalks or brick, depending on the area within town as our town standards.
We've been utilizing the standard for twenty years or more since uh Mike and I first came to to town. We uh, we instituted granite curbing along where the sidewalk directly abuts and a concrete cur, concrete sidewalk itself. Um, and then whereby where we can get a snowshuff, we would have the tunus curb where necessary concrete sidewalk or uh the tumina sidewalk in the hour reaches of town. In speaking to the state of Connecticut during the review for our lot sip funding, they kept mentioning the fact that we needed a town standard to then utilize what they consider to be premium materials, unless you consider the premium materials, you put granite curbing in, it lasts for a hundred years. We put in lesser materials, they don't tend to last that long, and the maintenance requirements increase. So uh, given that, we felt that it was necessary to come forward, ask you to formally adopt these standards, and then we can go back and then formalize our our request. Um, interestingly enough, on the on the lot sip side, the parched feet sidewalks were approved with these materials. The Richmond Hill were not.
Separate.
Separate reviews, so we're asking for this, and then we can then go back and say, please accept Richmond Hill, because Richmond Hill already has granite curb and concrete sidewalk throughout. Uh, we're just looking for an extension, so.
I might mention our meeting last week with DOT also included our four representatives, um Senator Haskell, who's now chairman of the uh Transportation Committee. Um, and this was one of the issues we had about the uh, the DOT process to get grant applications approved. So uh, this is in furtherance of that, so.
So just a couple of questions. Uh, number one, thank you for doing this. I think having standards like this is important for everything that you guys are doing. And I wondered, is this is, I mean, it's probably one of several that you have. Do, for instance, do you have written standards on perhaps paving or benches, public benches, et cetera? Is that sort of a standard that you have?
Extensive specifications for paving for all our work that we do. Uh, and then there is a standard for that we developed with uh Park and Rec Commission on benches.
Right.
What bench would go in which park, things that.
Okay, so that's super. Uh, I think that's great. Does this require any approval or review by P and C as well?
I spoke with Lynn on that, and she said no. So she said, if anything, that once this does get signed and approved, that she would like to be able to put it on her website. That we should have it at the desk for um building permits, et cetera, because it is, it doesn't only apply to work that we do in our right of way. It's work when development comes in that they have to do in our right of way. So it's nice to be able to clearly be established to them at the upfront as opposed to it being comment during our review.
Exactly, yeah.
Great. P and Z does have some standards in there, rules that we have to abide by, so.
Correct.
Yep.
This is something that when Steve Clippin was here, prior to to Lynn, he and I and Mike at Pastora had spoken about these exact standards at that time, and Steve was very much in favor of these, carried straightforward to this time.
Great. Thank you.
So I move we approve, Nick, do you have any further questions?
Uh, no, well, good.
Okay, uh, I move we approve this request from Public Works to accept the construction material standards of the town in New Canaan right of way and to memorialize the current standards that have been placed since nineteen ninety-eight.
Second.
Kathleen seconds for the discussion? All in favor?
I.
I, okay.
Thank you.
Well, Maria.
Want to do Bristow.
Yes, you're Bristo, Bristo, move to Bristo.
Great, I appreciate that. So last July, the Board of Selectmen granted approval for phase one of the master plan to perform restoration work at the Bristow Bird Sanctuary Wildwood Preserve. Uh, phase one was completed efficiently and under budget, and there was an opportunity at the time to perform additional work. Um, that includes the boardwalk project that's currently underway. But now that we're in our next fiscal year of the project, phase two documents were assembled to address additional work within the master plan. And we're actually able to accomplish more than what we were anticipating to be at phase two um when the project was first presented. The scope of work includes site work such as trail renovations, destination area paving, stone steps, boardwalk work, and water course work. The project was put out to public bid, two bidders requesting documents, and a sole bidder being Peter Lonnie Incorporated for a hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents plus a fifteen percent contingency of twenty thousand seventy-six dollars and sixty cents for a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Peter Lonnie Inc. completed the phase one work. They're currently performing the supplemental boardwalk work, and we recommend that the contract to Peter Lonnie Inc. for a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars be approved. The funds are currently available, and the Friends of Bristow have committed to completely funding the contingency should it be needed.
Okay, question?
What we did with the Conservancy at the time, the Conservancy said that they would fund the contingency in the town, would be funding the uh, the work itself.
Question?
Yeah, just two. Um, so on the contingency for phase one, did we go over the budgeted mountain? Did they have to cover some of that?
We came before the board for additional work. They were able to dredge the pond and use those spoils.
They were under budget, so.
They were under budget.
Right, right, so.
Okay.
At that time, those were totally funded by the town.
Okay.
This is the first time where we're actually asking the.
To do for the contingency.
Yeah.
And one other question. So when uh, when we're finally done with the master plan, how many phases are there? Or is this the last one, or do we have a couple? We have another year.
We have another year.
Another year, phase three.
Phase two thousand twenty-three is the hundredth year anniversary?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so there's.
Originally a five-year plan, but we're actually ahead of schedule.
Okay.
So we're thinking that it'll probably be one more year of funding um to take care of the remainder of the work. But yeah.
Great, thank you.
Questions, Nick?
Nope, all good, thanks.
Okay, I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Peter Lonnie Inc. for a hu, total of a hundred thirty-three thousand eight forty-five, fifth forty with a contingency um uh for the Bristow Centennial Master Plan work at Bristol Bird Sanctuary.
Second here.
Nick seconds for the discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Uh, Tiger, then you have the uh.
I have the tree warden. So uh, the tree warden went out for his latest set of bids for uh September fifteenth. Lose uh twenty separate locations in town. We received three bids. Uh, you can notice that bid one and bid two are quite tight. Olmstead Tree uh won the bid at forty thousand sixty-four dollars. Hutchinson Tree was second at forty thousand three forty, so there's a very, something about two hundred and eighty dollars separating the two. Uh, we'd like to award the contract Olmstead Tree at forty thousand sixty-four. The trees vary in location. We have some work at uh South School. We said work at Wavine Park near the Anderson Pond. Some on Talmud Hill, some other areas. The majority of the work, unfortunately, it's all ash trees. They're all suffering of late, and uh the majority of the removals are 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 now dead ash trees because of uh the disease and the pest that's plaguing them at present. So we'd like to go forward with this work at forty thousand sixty-four for Olmstead Tree and Shrub Care.
Questions?
Tiger, can you remind us, what's the total budget for tree removal?
It's four hundred and eight thousand.
Four hundred, okay. And this is sort of the first start, because we're in the new fiscal year, or we?
This is our third bid.
Third bid.
We had July, August, and September.
Okay.
And what's the total budget for tree planting?
We don't have a budget for tree planting. We have a ninety thousand dollar budget for maintenance.
Question.
For us, yes.
Got to fix that.
Yeah.
We do have some planting coming into Waviney.
Our funds, our funds.
Within the next, within the next week, we'll be planting a number of trees, about fifteen trees in Waviney. It's a joint project between uh Planet New Canaan and Sustainable C T.
Yeah.
Uh, they raised funds, and then uh Conservation Commission put in funds, and then we, and our highway staff will uh, will be installing the trees, so there'll be about fifteen new trees going in in Waviney, and then we'll work to kind of partner with them on future projects.
Those apple trees? I'm trying to remember.
Other maples.
Maples, okay.
We did plant some apples. That was a a donation from uh, I I believe the baseball group um, back in that area, but these are all maples.
Okay, questions, Nick?
Uh, no, good with this.
Okay, I move we approve the request from Public Works to, actually from the tree warden to enter into a contract with Olmstead Tree and Shrub Care Company for six forty thousand sixty-four dollars to remove various dead trees and stumps and pruning of removal of various trees around town, so. Second.
Second? I'm forgetting my turn, but yes.
Kathleen seconds for the discussion?
On here.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, is the chief going to be joining us, or are we just? Oh, good morning. Leon, how are you?
I just got access to video, so.
Okay. So we've been working on this for a while. Why don't you explain it, Leon?
Sure, it's a uh, what you have copies of is a free page lease agreement between the town and uh the painted vet seven B D Street. And it allows us to, as needed, house our um animals there at a rate of fifty dollars a day. And uh, pretty straightforward lease, kind of simple. And it's a kind of like a plan B for us. Um, right now, the shelter is adequate. But if a condition comes up where we believe it's not adequate, due to the weather or some other circumstance, like the water line broke uh months ago, and then we'd be able to use this facility uh for our animals. And and given the the use, which is a three-year average, about forty, seventy animals a year. And around ninety-six percent of the animals are out within twenty-four hours. We believe this is a it's a nice addition to our uh, our abilities to take care of uh New Canaan's animals.
And Leon, so this is kind of as needed?
Yes. Exactly.
No, no, no prior notice necessarily. Um, it's just.
It it'll be uh, as we need to, and he's been very accommodating, and we're grateful for his uh, for his help in providing this facility. And uh, it, whenever we need it, it'll be available.
Is there a key or a lock that that people know the combination, so?
Yeah, that's all being worked out. Um, we need to get a kennel. Um, that'll be specifically for our animals, and we need to uh work out the process for access to our officers after hours, et cetera. But uh, that's all in the works, and we believe that'll be uh completed shortly.
Questions?
Yes, Chief, so do they have to keep a certain, I think, is it looks like three spaces of always available in case that we needed them?
That's right.
But but we're not paying for that right to keep those spaces available. It's just it as fifty dollars a day, I think, uh, as needed.
When the animals are housed, yeah.
Okay.
And and that it's pretty, it'll be pretty much a, a uh, there'll be little cost, if any, to the town, because we collect a fee from the owner of the animal when it's collected, so um, there'll be, it'll it'll be pretty much a cost uh neutral solution.
Would we ever consider this as a replacement to the shelter we currently have?
Uh, i- if this current shelter became in substantial disrepair, maybe. Um, but uh, right now it's adequate. Uh, like, like, we've had issues during the weather, when the weather is extremely cold. Or we had, you know, the water main break there, and there was no access, no water available to the shelter. Um, that would be a circumstance where we would make it a semi-permanent solution. But uh, this is, this is a nice plan B, um, it it as needed basis.
Would you ever consider using this as our first choice, plan A, and the shelter as a plan B?
Well, not at this stage. Um, I've consulted with Allison, and she believes our current shelter is adequate, uh, given current conditions, and this is just happens to be a backup plan in case something falls uh with our current shelter.
Does this, does this have to be approved by the town council as a lease?
I don't know.
Anyway, we'll look into that, but um I move we approve the lease agreement uh presented by the chief of police um to uh have a temporarily, temporary housing location for animals um for their, our police officers and Animal Control Division to use. Um, do I have a second?
I, I second the motion.
And we have any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Leon. Thank you, Leon.
My pleasure.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Our parking facilities agreement, so this is a historic arrangement we've had, um, going back to when Earl Smith owned the properties. Two O eight, two twelve, which is actually two buildings that sort of have been combined into one, um, uh, in order for the current owners of the, uh, two O eight, two twelve to, uh, either sell or lease up the building, they wanted to change the parking arrangement, which has been in effect for quite some time, where they have twelve spaces. Quite far removed in the lumberyard, lumberyard lot over by the, what we used to call the unit in the building, now called the bankwell headquarters building, um, where there were twelve spaces, um, they have always, they for long wanted to have those spaces closer to their, to their building, and so the proposal was made to swap twelve spaces as assigned spaces for eight spaces over next to the state lot, the north, north state lot, as indicated on the map. And then they would have the remainder of the twenty-two total, twenty, twenty-eight minus twenty, twenty-eight, they have twen- their total is twenty-eight, only eight of which would be assigned unlike twelve currently. And the idea being that people come for the train in the morning, um, earliest people coming would take those spaces normally, but by the time you come for the eight o'clock train, you're way worth a lot anyway, so you're not really, no one's being disadvantaged. And they are willing to, uh, they're willing to, um, sacrifice for assigned spaces for the convenience of being closer for the executives or others who are, who, who will work in two O eight, two twelve. So it helps them with their, their building, and, um, um, I think it's appropriate, um, I do, uh, I do know the owners, I wanted you to have an opportunity to, uh, independently decide to approve this. We did review with Keith Ritchie at the park, at the Parking Commission, and, uh, it's really just relocating spaces that they're entitled to by co- by contract.
And Kevin, Keith and, uh, Commissioner were in favor of this, or, or?
Well, it didn't go to the Commission itself, but Keith was, Keith went over to the lot with me and, and was fully in favor of it. So, so it's something that, um, it's actually something that the Selectment had done in the past, was not done by the Parking Commission, so.
Is this building currently occupied?
They are beginning to occupy it. Uh, I don't know whether.
So that's an attractive feature to the renters.
Yes, exactly, that.
Right.
They feel they need it to be able to, uh, make it more leasable.
I'm not, I'm not sure historically why there was such a separation, uh, you know, I mean, s- s- space-wise. Um, between those, 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 um, parking spaces in, in the building.
And we own the, the, we own the land underneath the building. Is that right?
Oh, no, that's the other building, this, this is two, two O eight, two twelve, that, they, it's privately owned, Earl Smith owned those buildings. Uh, when Earl Smith, uh, did the deal with Avalon.
Yeah.
He actually made the deal also to allow Avalon to build their office building there, which is two twenty, and that used to be where the parking was for two O eight to twelve, so.
I see.
It kind of has a historical uh, issue in terms of, uh, those buildings, and again, two O eight, two twelve has their own parking, they have underground parking, and they have the spaces up, up by the ATM uh, and entry, but they, uh, they have a right in perpetuity, really, really with the town under this arrangement to have twenty-eight spaces in the lumberyard lot.
So is the town getting anything in favor of making the transfer?
You know, we're getting the, the ability to take back four spaces in the lumberyard, um, and, and, um, that are not assigned, we.
Still twenty-eight.
Even though, even though I think we sell oh, twice, we oversold the lot by twice, and we never have a problem with people not being able to find parking. And historically, they have not used all their, all their, um, permit spaces, as two twenty has not used all their permit spaces, they're entitled to them, but they never really used them also. Um, so, it's, uh, to me, it's a, it's a mo- modest, uh, change, and, and, uh, they, they are giving up something, they're giving up four assigned spaces in order to have the proximity to the building. So. Any further questions Nick?
No, I think, I think this, this is, uh, this, this makes sense.
As you know, two twenty has, has a similar arrangement where they have, uh, assigned spaces, and then permits for the balance of the sixty-two spaces they're entitled to.
Close to where they're, yeah.
Two twenty has these ten.
Contiguous to their property, yeah.
And then they have the balance, and they have nineteen spaces up here. And again, we put a ten-year, um, just Keith Ritchie actually suggests we put a, this is not in perpetuity as to the location of these, but we did say if, after ten years, if we wanted to change it, we would, they would still be as close as possible to the building. Which seems reasonable. So, I move we approve this. Amendment, really have a parking facilities agreement, um, with New Canaan Lumber Company, still the name that they operated under, owning that building, um, regarding certain parking spaces in the lumberyard lot. Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
None here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to, uh, Cheryl Jones, our HR Director. And Linda, our CFO. Uh-oh, oh, we have good news.
We would like to recommend, um, Diane Wilson, um, for the position of the Town Controller. As you recall, our Controller, Dan Noon, um, left the town earlier, I think it was last month.
Yes.
Uh, for a position with, uh, with the City of Stanford, um, we greatly miss her, she was a great, um, great person to work with, uh, but we are also happy for her, uh, but we're equally excited to have Diane Wilson, um, join, join the team. Uh, when we started the process, we had a total of twenty-nine applications, uh, we interviewed seven. Uh, from the seven, then we did a, um, another round of interviews with two individuals, and we asked them to present an exercise of analysis of her financials and whatnot, um, just to kind of see their depth and their understanding of municipal government and municipal finance and interpretation of the statements, and she did an amazing job. Uh, Diane's actually started with a ci- with a town, uh, she's been an employee of the town of almost twenty, fifteen years now. Um, she is our pensions and retiree benefits administrator, um, she's worked closely with our Plans Actuary for pensions, uh, she's also active when we go out for bond issues, that, because that is a com- an important component, so she has also worked with the investment advisors that we use, our bond counsel, um, she also presents and works closely with our audit committee and our Board of Finance, um, internally. Uh, prior to coming to the town fifteen years ago, uh, she had ten years of private sector experience, um, she's worked in private sector finance, working with business, um, auditors, financial controls, mergers and acquisitions, and also has experience in capital markets. Uh, prior to that, she spent four years working in banking, doing credit analysis, um, and she has also taught accounting at college level in area colleges, um, I think her understanding of the organization, our culture, um, and understanding and having worked with the existing staff um, is going to be a great asset to the town, uh, we are extremely excited to have her, she has experience with Munis, which is our financial system, um, and, um, she, she did it extremely well, and she is excited, just as I am, to have her join, to have her join this team, uh, Cheryl, do you have anything?
I support it, um, Diane has worked under me for post to fifteen years, um, she is very diligent, um, very good to de- in detail, and I think will be a great asset to Linda in the finance department.
Why don't you comment on how we're going to rejigger the pension coverage?
So today we have a meeting with Hooker and Holcomb, they have a, um, we can outsource a good part of that position, um, so we are meeting with them today to really start to understand it so that we can save a position um, and also a benefit package, so it will be a savings to the town.
Uh, we will be bringing, because of her fifteen years' experience with our pension and our retiree benefits, there's a component of that role uh, that she'll continue to do, uh, within the town, um, but I think net-net, we will actually have a salary savings because we will need to replace um, another part-time administrator, um, with a town with benefits, as I mentioned, and so I, I think this is great, um, I'm going to be meeting with the staff tomorrow to kind of reorganize, uh, reassign, because we've brought in a series of new skillsets over the past three, four years, including myself. And therefore, we're going to take this opportunity to kind of see how we can be more effective, efficient, um, I think it's also exciting for finance is, um, we talked about we're changing banks, uh, we have a system upgrade. And so we're looking to automating a lot of our functions, um, and it's really an exciting time for us, and so we're very excited. We hope you approve this position.
I would, I would just say that, um, we were sorry to lose Joanne because she was terrific, she, she had a prior relationship with Sandy, and, uh, so she's returning to Sandy, Sandy has a job after November, um, but, um, um, but I, so we, on the other hand, uh, you know, Diana's someone who you never really realize the talent that someone has on your staff, that they've been doing a part-time job, which is very important, but she has an MBA, she has a great resume, and she, and she had great experience at, at, uh, I think she started Chaser, or, or.
She worked with Jase, and then for that was, um, yeah, DuPont, Dow Chemicals, Union Carbide.
So she has great, great resume and, and a pleasure to work with, and also, um, you know, we like to try to give opportunity, and fairly if we can, the, so the alternative candidates who are not as good as Diane, and I'm very pleased we decided this, and Linda decided this, and questions for?
Sure.
Linda?
Uh, just a statement and a question, so I had the pleasure of working with Diane when I served as interim CFO, and, uh, she was terrific, uh, then, and I, it's, it's to your point, Kevin, it's great when you're able to give opportunities to, uh, folks who are part of the, uh, all of the town employees, so that, I think that's great, she's a great add. So just a quick question, and you probably don't know the total amount now, but the outsourcing piece that you're thinking about going to Hook, uh?
We don't know, they're going to present a package to us today, which, um, we will bring to.
It's kind of the grungy work, you know, duh.
Oh, no, I understand, yeah, exactly, as I, so that outsourcing piece will go to them, and so that would certainly be a lot less than, and in terms of, you still get a lot of savings by not having to, uh, replace.
And it will be covered under the pension fund, um, for that part of it, which is how we've been covering part of Diane's salary, so.
Great.
They are going to present us, that to us today, if accepted, then we will bring that to you.
Okay, great.
There's an, there's an employee-facing aspect of this that we.
Absolutely.
Diane.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So I what am I doing?
We're hoping you're.
Any questions?
Questions from Nick?
No, it's a great hire, congratulations, Diane.
Okay, I move we approve the request from, from, uh, the Director of Human Resources to hire Diane Wilson as our Controller. Second?
Back in here.
Kathleen, well, we've got two seconds, we'll take Kathleen's. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And congratulations to Diane.
Thank you.
And thank you Linda, who's, um, moving on to, uh.
Next one. So our next one, we have Susan McCoy, who is retiring after twenty years with the town, um, it was a union position, so we posted internally. Katie, who works for the assessor, was the only one who did put her application in, she is currently the Assistant Technician, um, she would become the Assistant Assessor. She is in the process of taking certain certifications under the state, once she completes her last certification, which should be within the next year, we would recommend then she be moved to the Deputy Assessor, um, Sebby is fully on board, so is Linda, and we would like to recommend Katie in a promotion, um, to the Assistant Assessor.
And Sebby's here too.
Oh, I didn't know you were here, good. Anything you'd like to add?
Good morning.
What is that?
Katie's been with us, uh, over a year now.
Two, almost two.
Almost two years, um, so she came as a. And I gotta say. It's gonna be hard to feel Susan shoes.
Susan was great, great worker and a great employee, and we wish her well in her retirement, then. Question?
Two questions, so, so Susan's going to stay on for a transition period?
The next one, yes.
Oh, sorry, okay, right, I'm looking ahead, sorry about that, um, how about replacing, um, Katie's position?
So what we will do once approved, we will then post that position.
Okay.
Um, that is a union position, so we will post internally, and then hopefully we will bring that to you at the next Board of Selectment meeting.
Okay. Great.
Any questions Nick about, uh, Katie?
Nope.
Okay, I move we approve the request from the Director of Human Resources to promote Katie Lamont to Assistant Tax Assessor. Second?
Second here.
Nick seconds? A discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And the last one is the approval for Susan to go from full-time to part-time, um, as I've said, she's been with us for twenty years, there's a lot of knowledge there, and she has agreed to stay on through the end of the year to help the transition with Kate, whoever we bring in, in Katie's position.
And then Susan moving?
Susan is, will then be moving after that, um, Sebby does have all the monies in his budget, so we do not need any other monies.
Okay, I move we approve the request to, to have Susan stay on part-time till the end of the year.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, thank you Seb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, thank you, Linda, are we moving to, okay, so, um, on your tablets, and you got an update last night. You know, the use, the subject of the allocation of the Arpa funds is something that's going to work its way through the, uh, Town Council and the Board of Finance, um, and, um, hopefully by October, November, um, we can make some appropriations here of these funds. If I, she, um, so, but I thought it was helpful if the, since, um, the Department Heads and the, uh, the Board of Selectmen are in touch with our needs, both governmental, and we've asked the Community Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce to, uh, do outreach for us, that we come up with some recommendations. So, these recommendations are, I'd call preliminary and, um, not really set in stone, but, um, I'll, I'll go down each of them, uh, Linda, you're gonna Tucker, why don't you join also, because this has been a project, um, for TDAC as well, um, what do we need by way of governmental needs, what do we need by way of economic development? What do we need by way of human, human needs, every town and city is doing this differently in terms of how they're ma- making their decisions. But the whole point of these federal funds is, you know, what do we need to uh, rebound from COVID? Both as, as a municipal government and as residents that were affected by COVID. So, um, for example, um, we thought that one of the biggest economic development things we could do locally is to get the playhouse back into, uh, operation. We've been working on that now for six months, um, and we have an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar playhouse theater, playhouse fund.
In the fund, yes.
But that's not enough to do all the repairs and code compliance that we need to do to put the playhouse back in operation. We're working with a potential operator to, uh, come in, but we can't reopen until we have a, uh, have a, uh, code-compliant building and a refurbished building. So that's, um, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on top of the eight hundred fifty thousand dollars we already have, we have to bring this to the Board of Finance and show the, show the plan for operation of the playhouse, and show the, show the plan for the the, uh, refurbishment work. Um, again, my, my idea is, we come up with these ideas, if you want to add ideas, or if you want to change the amounts, um, this, there's going to be a meeting, joint meeting next week of, uh.
Joint with the Town Council and Board of Finance.
Board of Finance, the Board, Town Council's meeting tonight, or tomorrow night, tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night's meeting, but the subcommittee will meet.
So people, other people may have other ideas, but that's one, one, and then we have the ice rink, the i- ice rink is, is, uh, the equipment is bought, the plan is to, uh, level the parking lot at Waviney to accommodate the, uh, ice rink to be in operation by Thanksgiving, what's the plan for December? And, uh, they planned to raise money for the, this is going to be a uh, really a public-private partnership, so to speak, in terms of we're going to help with the, the location and the uh, parking lot, which we otherwise have to repair, it's been one of the most terrible parking lots we have at Waviney. So, um, but we thought we would contribute a hundred thousand dollars toward their operation, uh, and project this year, um, they really need a couple hundred thousand dollars or more to, uh, begin to operate. And they will offset this by, um, charging fees and stuff, but, um, so that's an idea, um, a hundred thousand dollars sort of picked out of the air, but, uh, a nice round number, um. Uh, NCTV has made investments in their equipment with lot, money that we appropriated last year, but they still have further needs to make these, these, uh, spe- these, uh, broadcasting. broadcasting of public meetings work to an optimum level. And uh, so Bob Durant, Doran has been uh, working on getting, modernizing the equipment. So there's a $40,000 suggested allocation there. And then for a couple of years, we've been talking about, wouldn't it be great if we had a walking trail around Meat Park Pond? Because the downtown, especially with now the view apartments and condos, there's a lot, a lot more intensity downtown. And uh, as a connection to the uh, Meat Park is very well-used. And it would be helpful to have more walking ability around the uh, around the park. And Flexi Pave has worked out very well at Irwin. And uh, so um, that really is, again, an idea of a public-private partnership. Probably gonna be 20, $250,000 in total. But we thought we'd, but we'd allocate half of that to uh, incentivize neighbors and other people who want to contribute to the enhancement of Meat Park. Then um, Waveney Park Conservancy is um, just adopted a new five-year capital plan. They've done great work in their first five years. But we really have now had, you know, the origins of, of uh, Waveney Park Conservancy was they were gonna propose, propose projects. Um, and the town would uh, agree to uh, facilitate them, but it was really gonna be all raised money. We have matched on a number of occasions, uh, funds with respect to the dredging of the pond, which really, really was an obligation of the town. With respect to expansion of some trails. Um, so their master plan calls for, well, I forget the numbers, Tiger, they're four and a half million dollars, which is pretty ambitious. But uh, we thought we ought to begin to have some money to match their projects. And we, we haven't provided, we're gonna talk to the Board of Finance about allocating money every year. But we thought, um, since Waveney Park has projects on their drawing boards to uh, continue, that we ought to have funds available to match. We would not, uh, and they're also hiring a executive director. Which they've authorized at their last board meeting. Both Tiger and I sit on the board and uh, and uh, so this is a, a way of helping further enhance Waveney Park with respect to the 130 acres that's not athletic. And um, and having some funds to do the kinds of things we need to match their programs. We are responsible for the hardscape and they have a project they were doing soft, uh, soft scape. We do repairs of the walls and other hardscape projects around the, around the mansion. But as you see, they've done wonderful work with, with the trails and the then we can have further presentation of that. I, have they presented their five-year capital plan? Their five-year master plan?
No, they haven't.
So that's part, you know, something again, the, the, both the Board of Finance and the uh, Town Council have to relate to. So those are the governmental needs. Um, there, there's probably others that we haven't thought of. And uh, then community needs, on the one hand, we had, as a result of the listening session, we had back in, when did we do that?
July.
July. A number of organizations came forward. We know that um, there's a more demand in town for infant daycare. Um, and since YMCA is the only operation in town that does infant daycare, we, and they have the opportunity to expand. They've been working on an expansion plan. We thought we should contribute toward that effort. By uh, offering some ARPA funds. And uh, so they're having their architects look at the, how they have to rejigger their facilities to expand capacity. Then Waveney Life Care Network, of which Kathleen is currently Chairman of the Board, um, came forward with a plan. A much more ambitious plan than the 250 reflected here, but they are in the business of telehealth as a result of their um, merger with Visiting Nurses Association in Norwalk. Norwalk?
Fairfield County.
Fairfield County. And um, that, but they have the ability and the desire to give further telehealth, telemedicine services in New Canaan residents. There was an element of that of a public health nurse, which I think the town should be responsible for itself. And uh, so this is a, again, a matching contribution toward an expansion plan that Waveney Life Care has. Stop me if I, if you want to discuss.
I'll let you go through the whole thing.
Ask questions, but then, so then the other one is, you know, the, clearly, a lot of nonprofits in town were impacted by COVID. Those that had employees were able to get PPP, PP, PPP.
PPP.
From the federal government, as did Waveney Care Center, for example, and some of, if you, if you didn't have employees, you weren't eligible. So uh, but some, some were unable to have uh, annual fundraisers and, or were impeded in, in their efforts. And since the Community Foundation has a terrific uh, annual grant process where they have outreach people that I think many of us have done, where they uh, have volunteers go and, and review the app, grant applications that the Community Foundation is the, in the best position to evaluate needs, COVID needs. And so the thought was if we give them a million dollars um, to allocate to their annual allocation process, they will find those uh, nonprofits that have the COVID needs. Uh, it's a big grant. On the other hand, we can do it over two years. We don't, so again, this will be a big discussion, I'm sure, with the Town Council. Um, and then there's a lot of sense that um, you know, we, how can we enhance New Canaan? With the special federal dollars and open space is always a priority. And we haven't uh, really funded our, we only have $100,000 in our land acquisition fund. And um, so there's some advocates in the Town Council that would like to see that fund increased. And then finally, we've had a conversation for almost three years now about, wouldn't it be great if Silver Hill Hospital, which already as a result of the relationship we've had with the Dr. Mia F. Handler and now with Dr. Andrew Gerber, the current CEO, to have a uh, relationship um, with Silver Hill Hospital when we have residents of any age, really, to have um, emotional behavioral health issues, to be able to get immediate valuation and then uh, find the appropriate services. And the thought was, what if we had a fund where, you know, when a family is in crisis and they've discovered they, they may be insured, they may not be insured, but people need care immediately. Silver Hill Hospital is in the business of providing, providing care as well as evaluation services. And um, through the various groups in town like uh, Paul Reinhardt's um, Parents Support Group, and um, that does the annual vigil, that we, that we would have a facility and a fund. This is kind of seeding, in my view, an endowment fund, so that when someone uh, is evaluated, that they have immediate needs, and Silver Hill Hospital should be able to uh, provide uh, services regardless of insurance to local residents. And uh, so that's, that's kind of our list. Um, if anybody has any thoughts, we're gonna sort of present this list to the Board of Finance and Town Council. There's one other, one I just remembered. So be- because we had a big drop in parking revenues, um, every year, we make a contribution to the parking fund. And we're gonna calculate what we, what we missed last year with the parking revenues and make a cut. So I think it's maybe $50,000, $100,000, we're gonna figure out how much should go into the parking fund to make up for that. The parking fund gives us funds to re, to renovate parking lots when we, as we, as we need to, we're constantly doing parking lots. And um, so that's another item we would add, but the idea would be, we'll, we will move these on to the Town Council and Board of Finances as recommendations. Um, I'm sure they'll have others to think about. And um, also the amounts could change. But anyway, do you have any suggestions, your thoughts?
If I could just jump in, um, Linda reached out to his counterparts, as I did to mine, um, around the state, asking how they've been handling the process and, and making, um, making it known that these requests were, that these grants were to become available. And it really ran the gamut. I mean, we, we heard some have already just spent it on one or two items because they had some infrastructure needs. Um, we seem to have really gone the extra mile already in hosting the session and reaching out to the community. And this is, as Kevin said, this is just the start of the process. They're meant to be impactful grants, hopefully partial matching gifts. And um, we'll see what the Town Council and the Board of Finance Subcommittee's come up with as well.
Yeah, the one place I don't think we've done enough, because we really can't figure out how we can help, is the downtown business district. That's why having the playhouse back in operation helps restaurants and um, helps bring people to town. But there's, you know, we, we haven't really figured out what's the answer as to helping um, retail downtown or uh, and so.
And we've had a number of requests that have come in that aren't reflected here, that would fall into that category, possibly of the Community Foundation uh, grant process. So they're not forgotten. They just aren't included in, in this first round, if you will.
Great. I think these are great suggestions. So um, I'm curious, if, of the total perhaps that aren't on this list, how much more in additional requests?
Did you mean to refer to nonprofits or to?
Nonprofits.
That's, that's what the million dollars is for.
Yeah, so it would be included in that. I mean, there.
I see.
Yeah.
So we would guide requests to um, the Community Foundation.
And I've spoken with Lauren Patterson about this. Uh, she thinks that's an appropriate number. From what she's heard as well.
And of the total, remind me, is, uh, uh, my sheet looks different than yours, but um.
One on the tablet.
You got an updated one?
By email? Yeah, this is a.
Oh, by email. Okay.
Working process.
Okay. So total is expected 5.8 million, is that right, Linda? Or, okay. And we're suggesting 3.5, I guess, according to this new list.
We figure the Town Council and the Board of Finance may have additional ideas.
They may have additional ideas. Okay, right. That, that's fine. And how much has we received thus far? It's about three, right?
About three, yeah, 2.9.
Okay.
And we're gonna get the balance in this fiscal year.
We are. Okay.
Next June, so.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. And then on the ice rink, just a question, supporting the.
By the way, no one asked us for that. That was, that, that was, that was a suggestion that we help to bootstrap their process besides helping with the parking lot.
Okay, so that's my question. So these are obviously one-time contributions and, and not in perpetuity in terms of, so they know that, that it would just be, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And again, these.
Startup costs.
$100,000 is a number out of the air. They have an obligation to raise their money.
Right.
And, but it would help them get launched their first season.
They've raised 68,000 so far, at a $250,000 goal.
Right. And if any of these were, for instance, um, maybe not enough to help them get started, or if there was not, you know, they just really couldn't get started, then you would sort of redistribute or potentially think about another project that we didn't cover or, okay. We haven't proposed this, for instance, to the ice rink or?
No.
Okay.
No, that, that will come as a surprise to them.
Okay. For maybe for a day. Uh, okay. All right, that's.
In, in the same way that, um, you know, for example, we first, we forgot about the parking fund. I mean, there's maybe other things we haven't thought of, but I thought this is a good wishlist. And this really should be a wishlist for funds that we ordinarily don't receive. And we um, so.
Okay. And the only thing that maybe I was thinking that was not on here, but I'll give it some further thought, is in the area of public safety. Whether it's EMT or.
We did ask department managers, um, and the police chief um, mentioned that he had some needs, but we really thought he has those in his budget already in terms of the ability uh, to, he has in it, he has capacity in his budget. Oh, the chief is still on.
Thank you.
So, you know, since, since uh, the chief manages his budget so well, we thought he could find room in his budget, in, his existing budget. But we, certainly the Town Council and the Board of Finance can uh, can relate to department managers' requests. We only, I don't think we got any other department manager's request. We asked some, some suggestions uh, as we further thought about it, but we, we offered the uh, department managers, it tells what you need by way of governmental needs that are not something we would consider in the ordinary budget cycle. Again, we will have plenty of opportunity to, for example, you know, Candor, the Athletic Foundation asked, they were unable to have their uh, their, their Field Fest, two years now. And um, on the other hand, that's a long-term capital raising proj, project that we have. And um, uh, uh, you know, the way, the way they're monetizing the use of the fields and the way they're raising funds for, for enhanced projects. Maybe, maybe the Athletic Foundation should be included in this, but I, my thought was they were, they can certainly participate with the Community Foundation. And um, you know, others may have different ideas about including Athletic Foundation, so.
But Chief, you did actually have, you sent it an email a while back about a specific, specific project. I forget what that was, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's related to the epidemic of uh, vehicle thefts and thefts from vehicles that we're seeing. Uh, unfortunately, the state, I think, had $2 million and they distributed uh, that to certain municipalities in the state based on the rate of stolen vehicles. So for example, Darien got money, Stanford got money, Norwalk got money, Greenwich got money, but we didn't. Um, so they got 35,000 each. So I would love to see some portion of that money um, set aside for us so that we can kind of re, refocus our efforts related to education enforcement and try to mitigate some of these thefts from happening and um, be smart about it. Although we do generally finish the year-end with a surplus. I would love to see some money dedicated and set aside for us. I think I asked for 100, but um, anything would be appreciated. Because I think uh, it's, it's an epidemic that we're seeing and I think we can, we can do some good work towards it. And certainly the victims in New Canaan would be most appreciative, especially the ones we prevent from being a victim.
I would certainly support that.
100,000 was for overtime costs for the, for the investigative piece of this.
Yeah, that would be not just investigative, it would be education too. Um, so we're looking at it from a few different.
Education piece of it. Yeah. I just would add one that I think is also um, somewhat COVID-related and that um, COVID has certainly added to the time that we've had to, to do anything about. And that's my favorite topic of the Vine Cottage. So if there was 32,000 in this particular budget to paint uh, the Vine Cottage, I think that would be one that I would support.
Nick, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, Christmas in September. Never, never get between politicians and pennies from heaven. I, I go back to what I'd said, uh, I think when this first came up is that I, I, I note that uh, and I think it's the last item on the ARPA funding matrix, which is estimated lost revenue in excess of $3 million. That's revenue we'll never get, we never, never got. Uh, and I just, you know, query, maybe I'm a lone voice in the wilderness, but um, I think the interim final rules are pretty uh, clear that recovery funds, ARPA recovery funds can be used to fund lost revenue. Uh, and you know, when we lose revenue, that has a, a bottom line implication on the mill rate and expenditures, et cetera. So I, look, I, I think, I, you know, I, I couldn't disagree with any of the enumerated items uh, on the matrix. You know, I mean, Lord knows, just, just the Community Foundation alone is, is, is a terrific um, terrific organization. But you know, all of these things are worthy funding goals. For me, it's the big picture. I think, Linda, correct me if I'm not wrong, we're gonna get ultimately $6 million, is that right?
Yes, just to under.
And we had, I thought we had talked, or certainly I brought up the, the thought of maybe, you know, ring fencing a portion of that, whether it's half, whether it's quarter, I, I don't know, to go to the general fund. Again, very clear to me, and I've read um, the interim rules um, cover to cover. So I, I, you know, I don't want to be the Grinch who stole Christmas, but um, I, I, you know, I, I, I am recognizing that, you know, we've got this money dropping down on us. We should just recognize that, you know, that money is essentially subsidized in part by the revenues that we've lost previously and that we will perhaps lose in the future. I mean, if you look at the, the folks who have signed up for the, for the long-term permits, I'm, I'm one of them. But I think I'm, I'm, I'm in a third, because I think it's a third, a third, and a third in terms of you know, going all in on a permit this year, waiting, getting on the waitlist for two years or, or opting out completely. And um, so I just, I would just put it out there that I think consideration should be, and, and I, again, I may be the, the lone voice in the wilderness, but I think considered, consideration should be uh, should be given to, you know, the taxpayers and uh, the overall budget process.
Again, the uh, Town Council, I think, is gonna be the ultimate decider here, so that uh, these are not tax dollars, these are not local tax dollars. And I think the federal legislation specifically says you, the only thing you cannot do is reduce your taxes.
I, I thought so too.
Locally, so that.
I, I think that's right, Kevin, but it doesn't, it doesn't, I, I, I think it's right, but it's, it's, I mean, actually the interim final rules are, you can do basically whatever you want. You know, I think Linda, Linda would agree with me that they're very, very open. So I, I, you know, you, you're not necessarily reducing tax dollars, but you're putting money back into the general fund, which then will be spent, you know, again, if you will. So I, I just I mean, Linda, am I wrong? Or, because I think certainly when we had this conversation several months ago, um, you, you seem to agree that you know, that, that um, you know, you can, you can apply the fund, recovery funds to lost revenue.
Yes, the.
Yes, the application to lost revenue is actually the only time you can go back. You can't reimburse yourselves for expenses that you've incurred. These are meant to be forward-looking, new initiative to stimulate the economy. But the one criteria that you can look back on is to, if you've identified a certain amount in replaced revenue, you could apply these funds towards that.
Right, that's what I thought.
Nick, there was no net loss of revenues, you know, we had, the parking revenues were more than made up with the conveyance fees and stuff, so we didn't have an overall net loss revenue. But anyway, that's, that's the conversation that the town council has to have. And I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna decide this, you're not gonna decide, this, Linda's not gonna decide, it's at a different level, and
Who will be making?
But I think the important thing is we come up with the potential needs, I mean, this
Let's, I think Kathleen's question is, who, who is the ultimate decider here?
Town council, the town council, I mean, even the, the board of finance can make recommendations, but at the end of the day, the town council is gonna really have the most, the most voice here.
Kevin, who will be presenting to the town council?
Well, I'm gonna participate in their, their joint meeting, and I'll, I'll convey these, you
We're on this, we're at the meeting too, right?
No, that, that's a different, that joint meeting is a different meeting.
That's the police department.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we will convey our ideas and be part of the process in October and November, I think it should be decided by November.
It's a special meeting for town council?
27th at 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's ARPA funds, moving on to contracts, contracts under $10,000 for review.
Just have one question.
When I looked at the list, I couldn't remember some of them, so Tiger, or others may have.
If, if you can just comment on the, the Fuss and O'Neill contract on the hazardous building materials consulting. Word about that. Says Department of Public Works. Oh, yeah. Yes, it was, for the police department, yes. I think you might need to
Sorry, we want to do a preliminary review of what we might be faced with, should we renovate that building?
Well, this is actually something the building committee asked for, because we're trying to determine if the South Avenue building can be renovated, with two studies done, one was this, the integrity of the brick building, and that was, you know, favorable, and then environmental is an issue that if you're gonna renovate this new, you need to know what the exposure may be. The Fuss and O'Neill came back as a favorable report, not, not a lot there.
They came back with it, and so we're just paying for something, this is a contract that we took on, they came in, they did their assessment.
Yeah, to do a preliminary analysis of what we might be facing, you know, should we renovate?
And does this cost, this 10,000, along with other sort of initial costs to the project, set aside as a project?
No, not yet.
Okay.
We actually have $500,000.
We have $500,000 for engineering, yeah, for the architectural and engineering, this came out of that.
This will be part of that.
We also paid the two architect firms to do their work.
Correct, right, yeah. Okay, so that's why I wanted, we had a budget about 500,000.
500,000, correct, and this is, this is, that came out of that.
That's what I want to know, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Go back to Wavine House usage?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Okay, return to that, on your tablets, we added a late, a late contender, the one you described, the Wavine House usage project.
So, Kevin had asked me a few months ago to assist with some Wavine House utilization research, part of that research, I interviewed onsite almost a dozen professionals in the special events marketing capacity, and I worked with Ron as well on this, and with the basic assumption that we feel that Wavine House is somewhat underutilized, and how could we maximize it to the, to its potential? And the goal was to look for sort of a comprehensive solution plan for the residents, as well as a way to attract visitors. So, as part of that research, we, I, I started thinking about what the goals might be, and researching what the competitive landscape looks like, what our brand and marketing strategies might be, what revenue forecasts might be, and realized that we really need to define our purpose and our mission, which means stakeholders need to be interviewed, we need to come up with some creative ideas. And at the same time, we were approached by Iona College as, to partner with them, which was kind of interesting, as part of their students and their business management programs, and they wanted to offer a course this fall to students to address this. They've done that in the past with other hospitality programs, and we're working with them, and the good news is that we have been selected to work with these students and help us with some of this research. And also, I met with Sarah and Ellen, who are on the call here, they're with Case Study Brands, and we've talked several times with them exactly about this project and what they could offer. And Sarah and Ellen, if I could, just ask you to, to give us a quick summary of your presentation or your proposal.
Sure, thank you so much. We both run Case Study Brands, we're an independent branding agency, and we really focus a lot on building foundation of strategic positioning before we work on branding, and so we were super excited to have the opportunity to tour Wavine House, to learn more from Tucker and Kevin. Just by way of background, we do all the marketing for the Greenwich Town Party, and had an opportunity a couple of years ago to work with the New Canaan Athletic Foundation on building their Field Fest brand, we did all of the logos and all of the branding, and we're onsite for marketing for that, so that was a great introduction to New Canaan. And in this particular project, our proposal includes a multifaceted approach to understanding Wavine House, and sort of trying to amortize it in the best way possible to build it as sort of your crown jewel in the park, but also to understand from the current team, you know, what works and what doesn't work, to do some market audits and competitive research, to understand how other people and communities are using buildings like this for events, for weddings, and then really to work on what we call your brand DNA, how are we gonna articulate your purpose, your mission, your values, and then build that into a way to take this building and this business, and really look at the next chapter for how to make that work best for your community, and to bring dollars in, you know, based on amortizing investment. So, happy to take any questions, Ellen's on the call too, she's our director of account management, and you know, we've been in the branding business for a very long time, and we've realized that in order to build a business or build a brand, you really needed to have a solid foundation of understanding the goals and the personality of any given brand and business, and so we've really put this layer in, we've got the senior strategist on our team, and she does all the interviews, and we take that information, we work really closely with your internal team, and it's a super inclusive project, so it's not that we'll take something and do it on our own and come back to you. We want to make sure that everything we're working on is really based on the foundation of what your values are, and what the team, the internal team is, you know, feeling is important to build this brand and to go forward. I think one of the strengths we bring to the table is that we can take the work we do in this phase of the project, and if, when desired, we can then go ahead and build the next steps into a marketing plan to actually articulate the vision into, you know, next steps for branding, for marketing, for, you know, getting your customer engaged.
And Sarah and Ellen are very aware of the Iona opportunity, as well as the folks at Iona, and that would be a great partnership as well. What we're here for, asking is for the approval to enter to a contract with, with Case Study Brands to do this work.
So, the idea here is, Wavine House is a beautiful building, we've invested millions of dollars in the past five years in the roof and the ADA compliance on the first floor, we have more work to do on the second floor, but people keep on asking, what, you know, what is Wavine House for, what is it, you know, and it's a terrific wedding venue, but it needs to be a, a, a stronger wedding venue. And Case Study Brands has done a terrific job with the Greenwich Town Party and the, and the Field Fest for the Athletic Foundation. So, they know how to analyze and study. What we have still a need for is a financial person, and we're talking about either using Harvard alumni volunteers, or some business school volunteers, or figuring out how to get the, the business plan element to work with the Iona Business College, Business School study, the students can help us study the issue, and hopefully by the time we enter into budget season, in January, we will have more of a plan as to how we can enhance the use of Wavine House, especially as a wedding venue, to justify the further investment we have to make for ADA compliance on the second floor. And so that's, that's what this is all about, study and how to maximize the use of Wavine House to its best advantage. Questions for?
Thank you, actually, just on the ADA compliance of the second floor, it just gives a sense, how much was that estimated to be?
We have to do bathrooms, and we have to do an elevator. Right now, the building is totally compliant on the first floor. We still have a challenge to be able to maximize the use of the second floor, which is used, but we have an ongoing obligation to make public buildings fully ADA compliant, and we can't decide not to do that. We just have to figure out how to pay for it.
Oh, I just did a wedding there a week ago, yeah.
And the problem is, you know, the problem is, we're charging $3,500 for a wedding, you know, we probably ought to be charging $7,500 for a wedding, because it's a beautiful venue, but it has to be a beautiful venue in its entirety, it can't be tired, it can't be, it can't be messy, and, you know, that's why the work that Wavine Conservancy is doing on the outside to beautify it, and we're talking about bringing out a gardener part-time to, to further enhance Wavine as a beautiful wedding venue, but that's all part of the branding and the, and the marketing you then do to make sure you can maximize its, its value.
So then the only other question I had, in terms of your timeframe, Sarah and Ellen, it says three to five weeks, would that be sort of kicking off once the approval comes in, or?
Once the approval comes in, we right away dive in to schedule the stakeholder interview, so we have about 10 interviews planned, and I think we'll work closely with your team to identify who the best stakeholders would be. In parallel process, we start doing research on all of the competitive analysis and the market audit. So, when we first started out, it was part of the understanding that this was a tight timeline, and you needed it as soon as possible, and so we've put in an expedited timeline to make sure that we can work, you know, on this project to get you what you need as soon as possible. So, it really is a, it's a real partnership, so as soon as we can get the interviews done, we can work on distilling the information and getting the presentation, but we have staff in place ready to start as soon as we have approval.
And we're thrilled to have the Iona, Iona select us as their semester project, because these five young kids will, and a professor will be helping analyze a business plan and a hospitality opportunity to
They've done for a couple of years now.
Did they reach out to us, or did?
Yeah, so we'll definitely, you know, incorporate that as part of our interviews and add into the project, so this is, you know, we'll look forward to doing that as well, I think, you know, the incorporation of the business plan into a marketing and strategic plan is essential, and so it's, it's such a bonus to have that.
Nick, questions?
No, this is a great idea. I mean, we all know that Wavine is our crown jewel in town, but we want to maximize the value of that jewel, and, you know, this is a great way to start, I agree with you, Kevin, I, I think, you know, Wavine deserves a higher rental fee, if you will, for, for weddings, and but, you know, we, we have to justify it by making improvements. Question, Kevin, on the ADA compliance, I know we had an inquiry from friends of the Fed, federal government. Where, where do we stand on?
Tiger's working with the town attorney on that response, you know, we're, we are generally working toward compliance throughout town on the various aspects, ADA impacts every aspect of town, including like our elections and how we, you know, things we do ordinarily wouldn't think about it, so as long as we're making progress, there are no exemptions for municipalities, but as long as you're making progress, and we've been making progress for years. And so I think we don't really worry about that, that inquiry, but, but we also can't ignore ADA compliance, it's, you know.
Okay.
Anyway, so I move, we approve this request to introduce a counter with Case Study Brands to launch a strategic branding, I would call it a study project for Wavine House, and on your tablets, the the agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Kathleen seconds, further discussion?
Not here.
All in favor? Okay, you, Sarah, and we, we look forward to launching.
We will look forward to this project, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Then we bring it back to legal bills. On the tablets, they were all automobile, I believe, and any questions, want to move to approve that, the legal fees? Kathleen moves, and Nick seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, tax overpayments. Oh, I'm sorry, I just talked about taxes in the context of legal fees. The tax overpayments are all automobile, not legal. Do I have a motion to approve the tax overpayments on the tablets?
So moved.
Nick moves, Kathleen?
Second.
Seconds, all in favor, aye. That brings us to selectmen's comments, I will, I don't have a lot, you know, our COVID cases are down, and we are looking to stand up the vaccination clinics again, at a location to be determined, and that will be about 10 days out so that we can vaccinate all our seniors, and those who are eligible otherwise, and I've heard that Stanford Hospital is not gonna stand up vaccinations, because they can't get paid, this Connecticut attorney general, I think, has issued a interpretation that you cannot get paid to administer vaccinations, you can only get, you know, the federal government provides the vaccine for free. So, I don't know, that's, that's true, but a lot of people got vaccinated at Stanford Hospital, and, but we will have the vaccines, initially only Pfizer, because Moderna hasn't been approved yet, but for booster shots for Pfizer seniors.
To have to stick with the same one that you got?
Apparently, apparently, this is a theory that you can mix and match, and that works better, not, not worse, but that hasn't been approved by the CDC, or the, whoever has to approve, mix and match. And then, as I mentioned before, we are working on the FEMA aspects of Tropical Storm Ida, and in particular, we're trying to do outreach, we heard from a number of local residents who had significant damage to their homes. Cars are not covered, because cars are insured, but FEMA, FEMA, if Norfolk County is declared a Ida disaster area by the federal government, those who had major damage, and major means, again, if you had to move out, that's FEMA FASIA major, if you have significant damage that affected your ability to live there, and I'm told that Stanford has like 400 houses, homeowners that have problems, and Darien and Westport, the cultural towns had significant but we're looking for anybody in town that had major damage, and we're gonna be talking to the insurance agents in town, and perhaps doing outreach directly to, we know of some, but we don't know all, all of them at this point. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Coman?
Sure, I just had one comment, as, as a follow-up to our last meeting on September 7th, I want to thank Tiger Man and Chief Kralkowski for some more information, so this is regarding the intersection at Canoe Hill, Carter, and 106. And unfortunately, since our last meeting, there's been two more accidents at that location. Minor injuries, and, and they did not require any sort of transport, but that's actually brings us to four accidents in that location in the last two months. And so, Chief was kind enough to share with me the 2008 report from the Department of Transportation, where they had turned us down in terms of requests for something that would improve the safety of that particular location, which would have been either a traffic light or stop, four-way stop. And that's certainly understandable, because the, the numbers are a lot less in terms of, given the the numbers of cars that transport over that road, 1,500 vehicles on, per day. So, the numbers are de minimis in terms of the numerator and the denominator. So the numbers are de minimis in terms of the numerator and the denominator. That said, again, four in two months seems to have raised a lot of concern. And so Tiger was kind enough. He's, he's keeping me apprised of any communication that he's having with the DOT and coming up with some other potentially additional public safety things that we might suggest that will go in front of the police commission. So I appreciate.
It's a state road though.
But I think there's some things that we can do despite that. So.
Right. It's a state road. So they do take weather traffic light before we stop or win.
That's it.
But the work on sightline changes and things of that nature are shared.
So we want to at least look into, I think, given the uptick and certainly concern on the part of our constituents, I think is worthy of a further look into other things that can be done there. That's all I have.
Nick, do you have anything?
Can you remind me, remind us the timing of the RFP for Vine Cottage, speaking of Vine Cottage?
Going to be in the advertiser this week?
This week.
It was in last week's advertisement? I didn't see it.
And what are bids due?
It's for sale. We'll put a for sale sign in the front yard.
Are you serious?
Why not? It's for sale. Does that offend you?
I don't think it's practical. It makes less sense. It's just.
Well, there's other buildings in town that have for sale signs on them and.
I don't think it would pass a blight review right now. So.
Seriously?
Seriously.
The, the sign or the?
No, the, the paint, the peeling paint.
Okay. Nick, anything further?
No, nothing further.
I move re-adjourned as 10, uh, seven after 10.
Second.
Second.
Hey, all right. Thank you all. Have a great day. Beautiful September weather.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy fall.
I didn't mention the scheduling for the.